Planning Board Meeting of June 18th, 2020.
Roll call. So Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba? Member Clerk Espoio?
Yes.
Member Cavino? Member Raymond? Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Present.
Okay. Is Member Cavino here? I didn't hear him.
I am here now.
All right, great. Okay. So the town of Burlington will be holding June 18th, 2020 Planning Board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
You want a motion?
Um, I think we need to read in how people can get into the meeting.
So the meeting is held via WebEx and is accessible via them in July.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the meeting of July 16th, 2020.
Second. Thank you.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba? Member Clerk Espoio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Two.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we should proceed with 6A. Without them, I think that's probably the most, it's the most, the most simple one. So I guess we will proceed with that. So item 6A is in discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change. Off Wheeler Road Jumbo Self-Storage LLC, Jumbo Capital Management is the applicant.
Madam Chair, for the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bernstein. This matter was before the board quite some time ago when was issued a special permit, site plan approval. There was a hiatus as we went through the DEP process because the order of conditions was appealed and DEP subsequently issued a superseding order. We are now at the point where construction plans have been prepared and in connection with that and doing the final architectural, there were some minor tweaks that were required under the building code that required, that required some minor adjustments to the exterior of the building. And I have Andy Graves from BL Companies who can quickly take the board through those changes.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Andrew Graves from BL Companies. The changes were simply the normal changes that occur as we go from a schematic architectural package for approvals back to full CDs. So the changes were, there were three essential architectural changes. One was the inclusion of an egress corridor from the loading area under the building to the stairway. Second change was change of making the columns under the building smaller. There were four-foot square columns to two-foot base rewrapped square columns. The third column change was as a result of a file engineering of the steel frame of the building. So the grid shifted a little bit.
Yep.
Sorry.
That's one word.
Great. Sorry.
Sorry.
Proceed. Good to hear you.
Sure, no problem. So the last, the third change in the architectural side was shifting of the structural grid. So some of the columns beneath the building shifted around to accommodate a more efficient layout than we had already presented in the planning stage when the structural engineer was not yet engaged in the project. So some columns were added, the parking spaces adjacent to the loading area shift a little bit, and some columns along the west side shifted 10 feet towards Wheeler Road. And that was really it from the architectural side. From the civil side, the changes were even more minor. The building sits adjacent to the parking lot in the rear along rounder way, the old even, and we had to remove pavement to make the footings go in, and then we have to, so we're replacing that pavement. So it's not a change in a sense, but we are removing and replacing pavement, which wasn't shown initially. There was a decorative fence under the building adjacent to the parking loading area, which got shifted to in front of the tanning wall, to on top of the tanning wall. We added three more inches of crushed stone under the detention system, under the parking area under the building. An outlet, weir from the back of the tension system interfered with a structural column at the back, so that weir and the outlet structure shifted slightly dimensionally. Inspection ports were added to the top of the infiltration galleries. Tie-ins from the roof drains, which weren't designed during planning and zoning, were adjusted to where they met the detention system of the building. Some grading was adjusted very slightly at the lift gate where you go, when you enter the building, the control gate. And then there was a concrete pad at the side of the building along Blanchard Road, which was not coordinated with the architectural, so it shifted a little bit. And the last change was Captain Hanifin wanted mountable curbs on the roadways in front of the building, so we went from a vertical granite curb to a sloped granite curb. It kept material as granite, but it's now sloped to allow the fire trucks to mount the curb rather than being vertical. And that's it. Changes were all very, very minor in nature.
Madam Chair, we also filed a significant change with DEP because they have jurisdiction under the superseding order, and we were, we received correspondence early this week that they will be issuing an insignificant change on that. I provided staff with a copy of the letter that we received from them.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Well, Steph, do you have any comments you want to make before I ask the members if they have questions?
Sure. So as buildings get designed and as test bits and sites are further explored in the field, we typically see a lot of these very small shifts. As mentioned, there's small changes to the pillars underneath the building, the foot, the actual footprint is a couple inches changed in a few areas. So that necessitated a little bit of a change to the roadway coming in, as well as the, the concrete pad and the door as they actually designed the building. So no, no issues on the building. The mountable curb, I think, actually was something that was in the last minor engineering change that continues on with the slightly, like, modified curb there. And the drainage system, literally, the invert change, the invert type changed a little bit, but none of the function changed. And then the whole system, I think, was rate, I mean, it was, what, six inches raised slightly in elevation?
Went from, yeah, yeah, went from six inches of gravel to nine inches of gravel below the.
Yeah, so just for the separation. We did just receive approval from DEP on the insignificant change. That's the one thing that Conservation was waiting for, that they didn't have at their last meeting. With that approval from DEP, Conservation will be moving forward with an approval at their next meeting. And we have no other issues, and we've checked with all the departments in there. They have no issues moving forward on this proposal for the changes that are proposed to your previously approved project. So we rec, we have a decision drafted for you in the staff report.
Thank you, Kristen. This is Barbara. So let's just see who may have questions. Joe, you're here, right? Do you have any questions on this item?
Oh, Barbara, sorry. I had, I don't have any questions. I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Brenda? Brenda, do you have any questions?
Mute helps sometimes, right? No questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ernie?
No, I'll sit, Madam Chair. Thank you.
And how about Mike?
No questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Has Paul joined us?
Yes, I just got in.
Paul, do you have any questions on this minor engineering change?
No, I'll take a pass because I didn't hear it.
Okay. All right. Well, I do not have any questions either, so I think we can, oh, I, Kristen, I know this is not exactly a public meeting, but so do we need to check in with the audience and see if anyone has any questions? I know there are some neighbors present.
It's chairman, chairman's choice. You're not required to, but chairman's choice.
I would ask if there are any neighbors or interested parties that have any specific questions for the minor engineering change only, not the rest of the property. I would give them the opportunity to speak now.
Barbara?
Yes.
This is Betsy Hughes calling, precinct seven, town meeting member.
Hi, Betsy.
I have one question and then another comment. In the minor engineering changes, with all the shifting around on the lower level where the parking spaces were underneath, what, what's the amount of paved space under the building now? And whether they're marked for with parking lines or not, how many cars could actually fit under that building with the changes that are being proposed?
So the parking town and the striping is unchanged. There were previously three striped spaces, and currently there are still three striped changes.
I, I, I hear that. I'm asking how much paved space there will be, whether it's lined or not, under there, under the building at this point?
That, again, that hasn't changed. There's a number of exterior access roll-up doors under the building, and those areas in front of those roll-up doors are not striped.
So in total?
There are doors ready to accommodate a truck to turn around under the building as well.
It's a site circulation, but not the park.
How many vehicles can, can sit under that building at one time?
We'd have to do the math. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Could somebody do?
They will not be parked there. The records should show that, that they're not going to be parking there. There are three parking spaces that are striped, and that will be the limit as to parking. The site circulation, as vehicles come in and need the area to turn around and exit, but the, the controlled spaces.
Yeah, I'm assuming that when people bring trucks in or vehicles in to unload, that those, those vehicles are actually parked there for the duration of time that they need to unload or do their business there. And then when they're through their business, those vehicles will be moved. Is that, that correct, right?
Correct. And we couldn't put parking space under the building because that would not allow trucks to maneuver and turn around under the building. That's why there are only three striped spaces.
Okay. Well, I guess the only other thing, and I've, in a number of town meeting members in this, in this precinct who thought that this project was dead and are really disappointed that this is going ahead and building in the sensitive wetlands area, which really should not have been allowed to be developed. And adding self-storage units are generally unsightly and lower the prestige of this area, and adding traffic and possible, you know, crime in that area is something that the precinct's seven neighbors, business people, and town meeting members are very disappointed in this, in this developer.
Okay, this is Barbara. Thank you, Betsy.
Madam Chair, could I just remind the board that there will be a conservation restriction put on the balance of the site that the DEP, as well as, I believe, the Burlington Conservation Commission felt was a tremendous enhancement to the existing conditions down there.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. This is Barbara again. Are there any other people in the listening audience that want to comment on this matter before we vote? Okay. And I think we are ready to move on to a promotion on this.
Grant is trying to call.
Madam Chair, if you want me to make a motion to approve the request for minor engineering change for property located off of Wheeler Road for minor changes to the drainage system elevations and systems of the building footprint as reflected on the redlined site plan entitled permitting documents for proposed self-storage facility in Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by the BL Companies dated 23 October 2017 revised 15 April 2020, consisting of 23 sheets, building permit plan and foreplan entitled proposed self-storage facility Wheeler Road, Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by BL Companies dated 15 April 2020, consisting of seven sheets, subject to the following provisions, terms, and conditions.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second. Joe, second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Espoio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Pass. Member Gaffney?
Yes.
No, I'm not going to vote on this because I wasn't in initially.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So 601.
Yeah.
With, with Mr., with Member Raymond abstaining. Okay. For the members that were not present at the beginning of the meeting, because we did not have a full board, we tabled item one, which was reorganization. So if I may have someone make a motion to untable that item, I think we could do that now.
Motion made. Madam Chair, this is Bill.
Seconded by Mike.
Okay, thank you. So, so now I am open to nominations. Should that be a roll call?
To untape, well, sure.
Thank you, Jen.
Chairman LaRue. I think that was Dawn. Chairman LaRue, Vice Chairman Npemba, Member Clerk Espoio?
Yes.
This is a call, what? I'm sorry.
This is just a roll call for taking off, to untabling.
Taking off the table.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, I think that is everyone. All right.
Madam Chair, are you accepting nominations?
Yes. Please go ahead.
Yes. I would like to nominate President Chairman LaRue to another term, if you will. I'm nominating you to be our chair.
Second, Mike.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So who seconded? Paul?
Mike.
Paul nominated.
I seconded.
Okay.
So, Kristen, we've never done this via WebEx before. Are we doing it as roll call or how, how do we do this?
Uh, yes. Yes, it is roll, roll call. So if you've been nominated.
I'm not going to vote.
You've been nominated, so it's been seconded, so roll call. So Chairman LaRue?
Oh, I vote?
Sure.
Yeah.
Why not?
You vote for yourself.
Okay. Yes.
President votes for himself. I mean, Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Espoio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney? Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Member Gaffney, you're voting?
Yeah. Should I vote? I'm not, am I? Okay.
I meant all presidents vote, you know.
You all very much. And next we would entertain motions for the role of Vice Chairman.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Mike Espoio for Vice Chairman.
I'd like to nominate Joe Npemba.
Are we seconding?
I think seconded, yes.
I'm seconding Member Gaffney's nomination of Member Npemba.
And I seconded Member Rappaport's second nomination of Mike Espoio. This is Ernie.
Okay, so Kristen, how does this work now that we have two nominations? Do we take one at a time, or do we just go through the roll and people say who they're voting for?
Or?
Yes, or maybe, or reconsider, or?
Or ask them who they're voting.
I wasn't prepared for this.
How about paper ballot?
I think the most interesting thing would be to roll, to call each member and have them say who they're voting for for Vice Chair.
Yes.
Is that not?
Yes.
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure. Who's that?
This is Tayeeth Glor. I live across the street from the Granite Place, and I got a letter a little while ago that said you were going to be discussing the Granite Place in the meeting this evening, that it was a public hearing.
We will be.
You will be. Okay, so you're still dealing with other business. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
That matter will be up next.
Not much longer at all. Okay.
Okay, so yes, so I'm going to roll call, and you're, there's been two nominations. I'm going to roll call and vote and state the person that you will be voting for.
Okay.
And if there's a tie, I don't know if there will be a tie, but, all right. Chairman LaRue?
I will cast my vote for Member Npemba.
Vice Chairman Npemba?
I will vote for myself, Joe Npemba.
Member Espoio?
I'll vote for myself, I guess.
It's allowed. Member Cavino?
I would vote for Member Espoio.
Okay. Member Raymond?
I'd vote for Member Npemba.
Member Gaffney?
I'll vote for Member Npemba, please.
Member Rappaport? Uh, Member Espoio. Four, two, three. Member Npemba has the prevailing vote.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. And I am now accepting nominations for Member Clerk.
Madam Chair, can I nominate a Member Raymond? Please, this is Bill.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you, Bill.
Member Raymond?
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I second that, Joe Npemba and Paul Raymond.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Brenda for Clerk.
Okay.
I, this is Ernie. I would second that.
Okay.
Okay, roll call the same way. Chairman LaRue?
I will vote for Member Raymond.
Member Npem, Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yep, my vote is for Member Raymond.
Member Clerk Espoio?
I vote for Member Rappaport.
Member Cavino?
I vote for Member Rappaport.
Member Raymond?
I vote for Member Raymond.
Member Gaffney?
I'll vote for Member Raymond, please.
Member Rappaport?
I will vote for myself. Thank you.
Number four to three, Member Raymond has the four votes.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
One more.
Oh, one more?
I just, I added the recreation representative because we always end up doing it too late.
Oh, okay.
If that was okay.
Am I allowed to nominate people or not?
Yeah.
Okay, I would nominate Member Raymond because he's been on recreation for quite a long time and done a wonderful job, if he's still willing to take on that work.
I second if he's wanting to take it on as well.
This is Member Raymond. I'm willing to do it. I enjoy it. I attend all the meetings. I think it's important. So thank you for nominating me.
Uh, I didn't prepare the rest of the members for this. Are the rest of you comfortable with voting? If not, we can table it till the next meeting.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Okay.
So, roll call.
You're tabling me?
No, no, I just, I hadn't particularly voted, so I wanted to make sure you, you knew. So roll call. Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Yes, Raymond. Vice Chairman Npemba?
Raymond, sorry.
Member Clerk Espoio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Sure.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I appreciate your vote of confidence, and we'll try to do a good job for you. We are now on page nine of our staff report under item 7A. If I may have a motion. For 7A and B.
I'll make the motion, but I don't know what it is because you sit on page seven.
Sorry. Page nine.
Page nine. I'm looking for a motion to take items 7A and 7B together for discussion purposes.
Tell me.
I make that motion.
Second.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Espoio?
Yes.
Member Clerk, uh, Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond now, though.
I know, I.
Getting used to, yeah.
I'll do the best I can during roll call. It's already written, and it's just.
Not a big deal.
We'll change it for the next one.
Item 7A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.6 Outdoor Storage of Supplies and Equipment Incidental to Permitted Uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, 376 Cambridge Street, the Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. And item 7B is an application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street, the Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. So for the listening audience, this is the Granite Place that was inquired after just a few moments ago. I'm going to ask staff and the applicant's representative to give us a brief update, and then, like, listening members of the public will have a mo, have, have time to comment and ask questions. So just bear with us.
Yeah.
So for staff, I just want to let people know, so this had been a matter that had been continued for a while. So what we wanted to make sure of is, if it's been on our agendas for over 12 months, we want to do a full re-advertising, which just happened for this meeting. So as of now, this matter is on the clock for the sitting board. So it's, any of the, any of the previous hearings, if members weren't on the board, they don't have to worry about that. This is all, it's all new, starting tonight. Not all new, but just all, all of you are able to participate, and the applicant's representative will give it, an overview of the, the application and where we are at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Is that my cue, I guess?
That's your cue, Frank.
All right. Good evening, for the record, Frank Di Pietro, civil engineer with the BSC Group, and I'm representing the Granite Place. The owners of the Granite Place were not able to be here tonight, even virtually, but, so you're stuck with me. Let me just sort of give a, a quick summary. This is the property that's located basically on Cambridge Street, adjacent to Van Norton Drive. And over time, the Granite Place has taken over more and more of that existing building. There's the, sort of, natural cleaners right on the corner of Van Norton and Cambridge Street, and then their building is right next to it. Right next, on the opposite side, is what used to be Lester's, is now the Bug Control Place. There were a number of issues with the outdoor storage of granite slabs, cutting material for fabrication, and so the plan has been to relocate the fabrication center and relocate all the exterior granite, except for some remnants. And maybe you'll see a site plan in a minute. The Granite Place did in fact have a agreement to relocate the fabrication and the exterior storage to a new location in Wilmington. That deal was supposed to happen, excuse me, in February. The landlord has held up that deal, and actually, they finally, the Granite Place finally got their lease in the mail this past Wednesday. So without a lease, they couldn't relocate, they couldn't tenant fit up, they couldn't move the material out of there. Right now, the game plan would be essentially move everything from the site, except for, and that includes some storage trailers and a plow and a bunch of other material, as well as all the granite slabs, out of the parking area to the new site outside of Burlington. The fabrication area, which is in the back area, which on this play is labeled storage space, that will be removed and relocated to Wilmington. And then those areas adjacent to the building with the squiggly lines, that's where they want to keep some of the remnant granite slabs, basically to show customers. What the intention is right now is, in the areas where the storage space is, in the area where Mother's Shift, or Mother Thrift was, that area will have some internal storage of the granite slabs, again, for more or less as a enhanced customer showroom area. On the outside of the site? Uh, the outside of the site, uh, if you look on the plan, you'll see along the edge, and that would be the Van Norden side, edge of the site, there'll be, uh, proposed a four-foot white solid wooden fence that runs along from behind the, uh, cleaners all the way to the corner, and turns the corner to, to provide some screening to the, uh, neighborhood, uh, folks to the east. Uh, in front of that, there'll be a series of abreviades, six to eight-foot-high abreviades, ten-foot on center, which over time will provide a screening of the area, uh, from Van Norden, from the residential areas, again, to the south and, and sort of to the east. Um, if you could sort of shift the view to the front of the site on Cambridge Street, um, there are, uh, two areas, if you recall, there used to be two granite slabs, um, in the front of the site, one's been removed. The other granite slab is still there, that crosshatched area there, uh, basically at the lower, uh, right-hand corner of the parking lot. And then, right at the corner of the building, there's a little cutout, there's another crosshatched area. That area, those areas will be landscaped, and the owner is already talking to the, uh, landscape contractor to undertake that work. Uh, one of the items that she asked me to bring up is, should like to get the, uh, trees in along, uh, Van Norden Drive as soon as possible, uh, but does not want to do anything without at least the permission, um, and assumed, uh, approval of the, uh, planning board. Um, other items that they'll do, the, the hours of operation will be modified, uh, basically to not have the fabrication be the big thing, but uh, there will be some deliveries that'll go into the building, that will happen after seven o'clock, and will be done before five o'clock. The front of the building, uh, there's been a light out where Mother Thrift's, um, sign was. That light's been turned off, but there is a, um, permit pending to put a Granite Place sign there. Uh, and that permit is before the building's about waiting to have some resolution with the planning board. So, that will be something that, that will come down. Um, I can get into more detail, the letter I submitted last week did address, uh, the comments of, uh, David Murray. A lot of them, I think, he, I don't think he had, uh, an understanding of what the site plan was, I've pretty much gone over most of those. But I'd be happy to go into much more detail and respond to questions at this point.
Okay.
I have questions.
Okay, just one minute, please.
Sure.
Frank, this is Barbara, before we turn it over to the listening audience, I wanna give planning board members a, a chance to ask their questions. So, um.
Barbara, can I just interrupt quickly? I just wanted to let everyone know, we're still awaiting the landscape design, um, so we're not proposing to vote this evening.
Okay, thank you.
So, just, but we'd very much like to hear comments, thanks.
Okay. Joe, would you like to weigh in?
So, what, one of my questions I had, and, um, this is, and I think I asked it before as well, it, they were changing the size of the fence, they were talking originally about four foot or six foot or eight foot, and I guess they were changing the size of the fence based on the fact they had to get a building permit. I just wanna know, I, I'm not concerned about a building, I don't think they should be concerned about getting, getting a building permit, shouldn't, shouldn't be determining the size of the fence based on the fact that they need a building permit for the higher fence. I think we need to make sure that the appropriate fence is in there, whether that be an eight-foot fence, which requires a building permit, or a six-foot fence, which doesn't require it. I wanna make sure that, you know, they're requesting a six-foot, I wanna make sure that the, you know, the topography and everything warrants, you know, it'll be fully and accurate, you know, appropriately screened with a six-foot, because I, my inclination was to stick with an eight-foot fence in there as well, so that's my big concern over there, other than obviously the landscape, I wanna see, you know, what's, what they're proposing with that.
Do you have the latest plan that we submitted, um, that has a cross-section that I think addresses that issue at the bottom?
So, I will say, I checked with, um, the building, this is Kristen, the, I checked with the building department, um, and Andy confirmed a six-foot fence does not require a building permit, but an eight-foot fence does. They have proposed a four-foot fence here, but I just, there is a grade difference between Van Norden. Um, I don't know if Brady, you're trying to get to the part of the plan.
The section will show this more than I can, better than I can describe. What we looked at was, we took, um, a cross-section using the existing topography from, uh, basically the word drive in Van Norden, if you see it on this plan, and went up the slope across the site, and, uh, went across the parking lot to the building, and if you were to look at what, where the fence is, um, the difference between the top of the fence and the grades on Van Norden Drive is about nine, uh, and a half feet vertically. And so, if a vehicle or a person were walking on Van Norden Drive, that four-foot fence would in fact provide, um, you might see the top of the building, but you'd certainly block off any of the outdoor, um, storage of the, of the granite slab remnants. Um, over time, the abreviades will sort of grow in there, but that's gonna take a number of years, but the fence provided the blocking, um, where this is, I presume it's gonna be continued, um, we certainly can get copies of that cross-section out to everybody, uh, so you can actually take a look at that. It should have been in your packet at the bottom of the site plan.
Yeah, Frank, I'm not seeing it on the bottom of the site plan. I think that's why Brady's kind of panning all over, I'm not seeing it either. But we'll, we'll make sure everyone has it before the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Frank.
Sure.
So, to follow up, follow up on my concern with that, Madam Chair, I just wanna make sure that I, in my opinion, I, I feel like the neighbors need to have, you know, some understanding of the fence sizes and where they're gonna fall, and what type of screening is gonna be involved, and that's really where I wanna get my, I wanna get some input from the neighborhoods over there, and, and, you know, after they've had an opportunity to understand where the different fences, uh, will screen.
Okay.
Follow up on that.
Alright, thank you, Joe. Um, for Raymond, would you, do you have any questions on this item?
Did you say Paul Raymond?
I did.
Yes, I do. Uh, you know, I don't understand, I believe we've been very patient with these people, and, uh, it's getting a little wearing, if you will. Uh, I, I always, uh, object, if you will, when somebody makes their problem my problem. And they've had all these problems of, uh, you know, getting relocated and leases and everything else. Uh, and I believe, uh, myself, that we're asking very, I can't understand why they're objecting to a four-foot fence. As I said, I can stand and look over a four-foot fence, I understand the subgrade, but I would, I, if Joe wants eight feet, I'll go with him, but I would not go anything less than six feet. And if they can't, uh, uh, accommodate that, then they'll get a negative vote from me. But that's, that's all, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Member Raymond. Member Gaffney, would you like to weigh in?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things I have, I, I think I heard that, uh, everything's gonna be, uh, taken away from storage, but there's gonna be some remnant storage? Can you show me where the remnant storage is gonna be?
Sure. So, those areas right adjacent to the, also the Van Norden side of the building, you'll see some squiggly lines.
Um, yes.
Those go out ten feet from the building, and they total, all three of those areas total about five hundred square feet. That's where they would propose to have remnants, not the tall pieces, but remnants stacked up against the building, where they could show a, uh, prospective customer a particular type of material that was not elsewhere on the site.
Yep. So, uh, I, I would be opposed to that, based on my experience, uh, with this applicant, and I've, I've been over there a number of times. And, um, where they were storing material and then they took it back, that, that material still creeps. It creeps back into the woods, it's creeping all over the place, so I, I would not be comfortable with, uh, having that, uh, remnant storage inside. I would suggest, uh, with, with now the space that they have, uh, in the back without the manufacturing, to keep the remnant storage there, uh, or close to the showroom where the customers can go. The second item I have, um, uh, is removing that, that, that front slab, I, I said there's still one there, but, uh, that should be removed. And the third item I have is that the dumpster, uh, again, the last time I, I talked, I recall, we were gonna put it in the back left corner where that trailer was. And it looks like here, the dumpster's now in the front, uh, the median, medium right corner near the residence again. So, uh, and we, they, I thought the initial proposal was up and back, and we said move it to the left away from the residence, and now it's over to the front, uh, over to the right near the residence again. So, I'd like to see if we can move that, uh, that dumpster back where it was uh, suggested the last time, where the, uh, where the shipping container is, in the back where it says concrete pad. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Frank, can you comment, can you answer Bill's request?
Sure.
Check.
To, I mean, I'll certainly discuss all those with the, uh, client. We have shown the enclosed dumpster in that location, I think, pretty much through all the sites. And the reason for that is, um, the truck can get in and get out to pick up that dumpster. Um, I will, uh, admit and have talked to the, uh, client about this. They have a temporary dumpster that's unfortunately more near the back on the Van Norden Drive side, sort of in the area we're showing for potential snow storage. Um, I've asked them to relocate that. Uh, and right now, the area where we're showing for the dumpster has their dump truck where they put the remnants in that and keep it there, and then they drive it off and get rid of those. Um, that's why the dumpster was not there, is what I was told. Um, but I will, uh, pass on Joe's, uh, I mean, uh, Bill's comments to the client.
Yeah, what we want, we wanna do is, we wanna think about the neighbors here, right? So, the idea was, in, in maybe your regulations difference mind, the, the initial po, the initial point was way back, that's where the dumpster was gonna be, right near the house. You've actually got houses across the street, and I know the dumpster, the wheel dumpster that you're talking about, I've seen that, uh, when I've driven by, uh, recently. What you wanna do is get that dumpster away from the neighborhood, and not just from a site standpoint, but you're gonna put it around back because it's from a sound standpoint. You know, again, the confidence I have here is very low that, that even the timing of that's gonna disturb the neighbors, so if we can put it over to the left on the concrete pad, then you've got it out of sight, you've got the, the noise to be limiting to your, to your neighbors that are adjacent to that, that are across the street or in the back.
I mean, pass that on.
Thank you, Bill. Um, okay, Brenda, would you like to comment on this?
Uh, no, I don't have anything additional to add. Um, actually, I, I, do we have a rendering of, of this? Of what this is going to, the final product will look like?
I don't think we do. The only thing that's changing in terms of the exterior of the building, I believe, is going to be the landscaping, which we don't have tonight. Um, correct?
Right. Right, I think that they said that they were gonna be bringing a plan, if they could also bring a rendering, you know, so we could have an idea of, you know, that, that they're proposing this four-foot fence, you know, we think it should be six or an eight-foot fence. You know, show us what it looks like, try, you know, try to sell me on it, because a, as far as I'm concerned right now, I, I'm not sold. Um, but I would like to see a final plan, I would like to see a rendering, uh, that's all. Um, and, and also, you know, I, I think it's helpful when the applicant is, is present as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Mike, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only, um, thing, Bill, remember Gaffney kinda, uh, mentioned it, it's that slab out front, I think, I still think it looks terrible. Um, I know we're waiting for the landscape plan, I don't know how much you can dress up a piece of granite, but I'm eager to see how nice we can make it look, so that's all I had, Madam Chair, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Ernie, did you have anything to add?
Uh, just a couple of things, since the reason for maintaining the fence at four feet was told to us, uh, that they would need a, uh, building permit to make it any higher, I think it should be now six feet high, since, uh, Kristen has told us that a building permit is not reached, required for a six-foot fence, so that should be an old brain, or a six-foot fence there. I know there's a difference in, uh, there's quite a difference in elevation, but we're trying to protect the neighbors, not just in fact, but in, in perception. And there, there, the remnants behind the building, they're in an area ten foot out from the building. What would be wrong with putting a fence around that whole ten-foot area out here, so the remnants would not be available, or would not be seen, at least? If they're there to, uh, to show customers, I'm sure customers could walk inside a, a lodge gate that opened into that area. Those are my two, thank you.
Yeah, I, if Madam Chair, if I may, to kind of expand my comments there. This is Bill. So, they, my, my issue here is, had not having remnants at all, uh, is that, based on, uh, the past behavior here, even when there's a cease and desist, moved some granite back, and then it went back into creep, and it went back into uh, non-paved areas into the woods. So, I, I think allowing remnants anywhere outside, um, if, if you prohibit it, then they're not allowed at all. If you're allowing it, um, my concern is, again, based on the, the behavior, it's gonna be, it's gonna be creep, and then again, get back to where we started from with material all over the place, which is not what we're looking for here.
I was talking about, uh, storing them inside a solid fence, so they would definitely be, uh, you know, if they're outside the fence, they're outside the fence. If they're, if they're outside a marked line on the ground, a little different, but.
Sure, yep. Thank you.
Ernie, is that all?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, I don't have any further comments, other than the ones, um, echoed by my fellow board members, I agree with Bill, that we have concern here because of past behavior. I think that the outdoor storage should either be within an enclosed fenced-in area, or it should not be outside at all, it should be in the building. So, that's all I have, but I know we have neighbors here that would like to speak, Ms. Glor had, uh, raised her hand virtually before. So, I'd like to ask her, um, first to come forward and share with us her comments and concerns.
Okay, I live directly across Cambridge Street, I don't live down Van Norden Drive or anything. And the things that we are affected by are the noise, the light, and the vibrations. And I assume that the vibrations will be moving along with the fabrication when it moves out, which I'm very happy to hear about, because the last I heard was a few months ago, that they were gonna be moving things off-site, and then we haven't seen anything move. And the explanation that they've been having a hard time getting the lease signed makes sense, but I hope it happens soon. Um, the second, because one night, actually, I'm not sure what time, I don't remember what time it was now, but I was aware of laying in bed and feeling the bed vibrating because of the fabrication going on in the building across the street. Um, the other thing is, of course, we hear the same loud bang that the neighbors hear when the dumpsters are emptied, and I can't imagine what it must be like down on Van Norden Road. Um, the third thing is that we used to look out of our windows at night and basically see a dark parking lot over there, and now there is full light on that parking lot. I think, from my perception, that they've installed a light up on one of the light posts by, between the cleaners and the building, that now just fully illuminates the parking lot. We have room darkening shades, which we pull down on our windows, and I also have room darkening curtains that I've hung up over the whole window in an attempt to shut out light coming from across the street at night. And, um, it, it just seems like it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger, instead of getting smaller like we kind of expect it to happen, and getting more intrusive. So, that's the perspective from across Cambridge Street. Ironically, the slab that stands out in front is really the least of our concerns.
Okay, thank you, um, thank you, Taeus. I, I have a quick couple of questions for you, um.
Could I get the name and address, please, of the speaker?
Sure.
My name is, yeah, my name is Taeis Glor, it's T as in Tom, H A I S as in Sam. The last name is Glor, G L O O R. And the address is three eight seven Cambridge Street.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, so, when, the incident that you described, when you could feel the vibrations, do you know when that happened? Because there's been, they're not supposed to be doing any fabrication there at all now for many, many months.
Okay, um, you know, I, I woke up, I don't know, it was probably a week and a half ago or so, it was recent. And I felt, I felt like vibrations, and I thought, am I just feeling things? What's going on? And then I went back to sleep, or I got out of bed, or I don't know if it was at night, or if it was in the morning that this happened. And then later on, I said, oh, I said to my husband, oh, did you feel vibrations earlier today? He said, oh, yeah, it was coming from across the street.
Okay, it doesn't, it, you don't need to. Okay, it doesn't, it, you don't need to get more specific than that because the, they have not been allowed to be doing fabrication there out. Well, they could do it inside with the doors closed, but they, the fact that it's being felt across the street is very disturbing. Um, Frank.
Like I said, you know, I'm in the house, I'm in the house and I felt vibrations. I, I, I can't tell you unequivocally that it was coming from them, but it seemed like it was the, there wasn't any construction going on like down our street or anything at the time, so.
Was this late at night?
It was sometime when I was in bed, but that doesn't necessarily mean.
Could have been more. Okay.
It could have been at seven thirty in the morning.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. So, um, Frank, if you can address some of these concerns, um, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what to think about these intense vibrations, but also if you could comment on that, that would be great. Also, I'd like to know, um, if you know anything about the.
Um.
I muted myself. About the additional lighting or, um, if something's been added? Because I think it would be relatively easy for us to put a condition in that the lighting has to go out when they're not operating and, um, put some time limits on that. And then also I think we're going to need to post times for the dumpster when it may be emptied and when it can't. So, um, can you shed a light, Frank, on whether or not lighting was added and also about this vibration question?
So the new trick I've learned for, um, virtual meetings is when you get asked a very difficult question, suddenly you mute yourself so people can't hear your response. Um, so the short answer is I, uh, I'm not aware of those items. Um, I've had a number of discussions with the applicant, uh, my client about the hours of operation. Um, the issue that was the light on the building was a problem for the folks across the street. Uh, they have stopped that. I will find out about a new light being added. Um, the, I've had a number of discussions with the applicant, uh, concerning the hours of operation, particularly fabrication, which is still ongoing during the day, but also that even in the heat, those doors are supposed to be closed unless they're bringing something in and out to be cut. Um, so I'm sorry, I can't be more definitive, but I will, uh, be talking to the client tomorrow about these items. Um, and.
Okay.
Um, the vibration will be interesting and I don't, if the person can find out better about the time, uh, again, it's supposed to be after seven o'clock at the earliest and no later than five in the afternoon. Um. When I drive by there, I look, but I'm not driving by there anymore at, before seven o'clock, I'm afraid, so, uh, I can't test.
Right, well, it very well, it very well could have been at seven thirty in the morning. I'll give you that. And the light that I'm talking about is a light that it seems to me that it's new and it's up on a post and it shines down onto the parking lot. It's not a sign on the building that's lit up.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, as you've heard, we're not going to be voting on this matter tonight. So we will have time between now and our next meeting to investigate, um, the lighting issue and figure out what we need to do about the dumpster, the hours for emptying the dumpster. And, um, and also ask some questions about this strange vibration thing because it seems rather alarming to me that you can feel that across the street in your own home. It must have been alarming to you as well.
It wasn't extreme. It didn't wake me up per se, but I was laying in bed thinking, hmm, what is that? Am I imagining things? So.
Yeah, we, I wonder if any of the other neighbors have felt that, but. Okay, thank you. We will be looking into this. I appreciate it. Um, does it have anything else you wanted to ask?
No, thank you. Thank you for letting me attend the meeting and I'm sorry I was interrupting earlier. I just was wondering. I, my phone is getting really low on battery.
Oh, sorry. The, the audio is going in and out, so I can't. Good evening. Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other, um, people in the listening audience that want to comment or have questions on this matter? Okay, Jen and Brady, are we seeing anyone?
I do not see anyone, Barbara.
We are not seeing anybody.
Okay, all right then, I think we're probably ready to continue.
So Barbara, can I just, uh, summarize kind of the questions that were asked to look into? So the new light, um, the lights, like the timing of lights to turn them off at night, the dumpster moving to the back of the building, four foot to six foot fence, um, and an enclosure for the, uh, the remnants, uh, and then dumpster hours and vibrations. So if there's anything else I missed, please let me know.
Kristen, I also would like to see a rendering of, of this enclosure.
Rendering.
And the, um, and the landscape.
Yep.
So that we have a better idea of exactly what the, the full picture looks like.
Yep, yep. Sorry about that. Yeah, rendering. We do expect a more detailed landscape plan for the front by, by the next meeting. According to Frank.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. I think we are ready to continue this matter.
This is Paul. I make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of July sixteenth, twenty twenty.
Chairman LaRue.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, second. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, I am now looking for a motion to take items seven C and seven D together for discussion purposes.
Chair, uh, Chairman Somay.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Npemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Espoio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, item seven C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit to section four point two, six point, excuse me, point ten, restaurants of the zoning bylaws, seventy-five and eighty-five Middlesex Turnpike, the Burlington Mall, Common Craft Holdings LLC is the applicant. And item seven D is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, seventy-five and eighty-five Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, Common Craft Holdings LLC is the applicant.
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, Christine Hung of Rehm &amp; Bronstein, attorney for the applicant, Common Craft Holdings LLC. With me tonight as part of the project team, I have Brett Dennehy, Principal at Common Craft, Jocelyn Gambon, our Site Civil Engineer from VHB, um, and Alberto Cobre and Jeff Farrell, who are our architects from Joe the Architect. We are really excited to be before the board tonight on Common Craft's application for a special permit for restaurant use and site plan approval for a unique and innovative dining proposal to include both a restaurant and a small one hundred and sixty square foot retail store operation. Um, the location will be between Legal Seafoods and Fogo de Chao, which is all part of the repositioning of the Burlington Mall. Um, Common Craft is the first of its kind and they are really excited to become, um, a part of the Burlington community. We have renderings, um, of the restaurant concept that we'd like to share with you tonight to give you an idea of the layout and how this restaurant will be a really fun and cool place for a family to go to dinner, um, or after work with colleagues. Um, with that said, I'm gonna, um, oh, thank you, Brady, for putting that up. With that said, I'm going to, um, turn it over to Brett, who will talk to and explain the concept and kind of walk you through some of the renderings so that you can get a visual perspective of what, what the restaurant and the small retail area will look like.
Thanks, Christine. I get, uh, thanks for having me, everyone. Before we start, can, can everyone hear me? Cause I've had some difficulties in the, the WebEx previously.
I can hear you.
Yeah, come in, sign.
I still want to start mumbling with no, with no reception. Well, well, thanks. We're, we're excited to, to, to bring the project to Burlington. This is, it's a new business. Um, and, and I think before we go into the design, I thought I'd give you guys, um, two seconds, high level of view on, on the concept and why we're doing it. The craft community, you know, craft production community, whether it's, you know, people who create cheese or beer or wine or food or farmers, um, you know, a lot goes into when you go and get a dining experience. And, and what we want to do is two things. One, we want to shine a light on the producers of our region that, that bring that experience to life behind the scenes. You know, the, the brewer, the baker, the candlestick maker, so to speak. And at the same time, we want to give consumers the experience to, to get a little closer to what those producers are like without having to drive all around the Commonwealth or into New England's region. And so the idea of Common Craft is to have a restaurant, but allow for parts of the restaurant to be flexible and adaptive and kind of almost rebrand them around what's really important to producers. Um, you know, their brand, their style, their DNA and allow, uh, as you go into, to have a dining experience, you can kind of sit inside a room that is themed around a specific producer. And at the very outset, the mission of, of the company is to ensure the craft economies thrive in Massachusetts. Um, and so I, I thought framing it up a little bit would help as we kind of go through the concept and, and walk through the, walk through the space. So, so, um, I guess Christine, are you, are you going to kind of steer the ship?
No, you know, Brady will go, yeah, there you go, Brady. And just flip through.
So just guide, guide Brady to the kind of which, um, what you want to look at specifically? We can just go through the, the slides if that would help you.
All right, perfect. Thanks, Brady. Uh, so that you can go to the next page. The, um, the first five pages really focus on the, the exterior of the building. It's, um, just, I'd say there's three parts to the exterior. There's, there's the main entrance, which is under the canopy. Um, it's very glass kind of open, so you kind of see inside the, see inside the unit. If, you know, if, if you want to, the easiest way to describe what we're trying to do is if you were walking down a, a street in the town and there happened to be a number of storefronts on it, we kind of want to recreate that experience. So you're walking into Common Craft and it feels like you're walking down a, a small street in, you know, Burlington, Vermont, and there's, there's a small, um, you know, brewery over here or a winery over there and, and that, that sort of vibe. So when you walk into the main room, which we'll get to, that's almost kind of representative of a, of a main street. On the left side here is that hundred and sixty foot retail unit that, that we mentioned earlier. Um, I'm going to come back to that, just to, you want me to talk about the operations and then how that will work, but, um, but, uh, yeah, I'll touch back on that in a second, but that's on the left. And on the right side, the green grass is, is not our space, that's Simon's space, but in front of it is a patio, um, which this open area is gated. This is, um, this is, this seats, this is just, uh, outdoor seating, seasonal seating, um, and winter, it's, it's not, it's not four seasons. It's, it's just for, um, it's just for just kind of spring, summer and, and early fall. So that's, that's the exterior of, of the space. The next few pages give you different looks at the exterior. I guess you can keep going through them. The main hall, you can skip this page as well, or the next one. The main hall is, is like I said, sort of like if you were the street of, of, of Common Craft, on, on the right and the left, and you'll see some views in a second, are where you kind of enter into some different experiences. But the key theme is you can sit and have dinner anywhere you want. Like you can sit in the, in the street and the, in the square, so to speak, and, and have dinner, or you can go into any of the experiences. There's wait service at all these, um, at all these places. But the, the idea is that this is sort of neutral, neutral ground, so to speak. It's a kind of, it, it's, it's the middle of the space. Brady, if you keep going, um, the next couple of pages. This is looking into the first tenant, that's looking into the, uh, another, another room, um, which we'll go into each of these rooms in detail. You can, you can keep going here. Uh, this is the third room, which is kind of like a speakeasy and, and there's, um, and now we'll go into the first one. So Idle Hands will be the first. These will change over time. You know, one of the key themes that we have is kind of flexible and adaptiveness, but the first theme of the room is Idle Hands. They're a really great craft brewery in Malden, Massachusetts. Um, the, the, the design of this room, we worked with them on to kind of make it feel like it's their place, uh, even though it's, it's ours and we're operating it. Uh, you can, you can go to the next page, we'll go in. It's, it's a, it's, it's sort of a German themed restaurant. There's, on the, on the other side over here, this is a shuffleboard table. It may not be that. The idea is there's some fun activations on the left side, so you, you can, you can play some games and then the picnic tables are, it's kind of picnic table, uh, seating. There is, this is the space that has access to the outdoor patio. There'll be, um, kind of lift up garage doors to kind of give an open air feel to the place that you could go outside and, and sit and have, have dinner on the outside. Brady, you can keep, you can keep going. Um, this is kind of, it's, it's, it's more showing why this, uh, this light fixture, it's kind of combining some classic German styles with a chandelier and then these hanging plants in one, but that's more of a design detail than, than anything else. That's sort of a look at the, at the back, the back bar and, and where, where drinks would be served from. The second space is, is Hermit Rush. This is a very different type of, 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 uh, craft beer manufacturer. They do kind of an old Belgian style of beer. They do very small production. They're not, they're, they're pretty, they, they do it, uh, everything they produce, they, they do in open air. It's a, it's, it's a very kind of arduous task. But anyways, the idea is to kind of keep that open air feel for their space. It's, it, there's, it's, it's, it's wide open. You can, um, sit in the kind of around the, the, the main, uh, pole here, which is a, is a drainage pipe, we're able to work with. You can go in, you can sit around tables on the right, you could sit in the left. And then there's almost like a, a little bit of a patio area in here. But again, a different experience. This is not German at all. It's a little bit, I would call it like, um, slightly upscale, but, but, but kind of classic wood and, and copper and, and, and hunter green type colors. Um, so a very different design than the other room. And this design is, 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 has been chosen by Hermit Rush. This is kind of what they feel like the aesthetic of their brand is like. And so when you come and have dinner in Hermit Rush, you're going to have a, a little bit of a different experience than you would at Idle Hands. And the idea, hopefully, is that the producer gets to, gets to give, gets to give the consumer more, you know, more about what they, that their brand's all about, other than just the label on their can or the tap handle that you would get at a normal restaurant. So when they walk out and they go to, uh, the next time they go to a, a, a liquor store and they reach into the cooler where everything looks the same, they, they have a chance to say, oh, I remember Hermit Rush, that was a great spot and, and I liked the music they played and all that stuff. So that the idea is to give consumers a kind of a three sixty experience versus just a tap. And, and so this is Hermit Rush and it's very different. If you go to the, if you go to the next one, this is different looks at, at, at Hermit. Um, this is looking out. Then the last one is Deacon Giles out of Salem, Massachusetts. Deacon Giles is, is it's a small distillery. There's, he got a good backstory on, 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 on the brand and the name, but, um, this is in the back right corner. And once you go in, it's, this is clearly the space that is, 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 is for adults and, and, and it's, it's darker and it's meant that way. This is date night where some of the other stuff is more open and, and games and things like that. A totally different experience. And Brady, you can, you can kind of go inside and we can see it. This is a, um, it's darker, it's, uh, it's, it's still got a lot of wood and copper and similar, similar themes, but it's, you know, this is date night. This is, uh, it's just, it's a different vibe. And this is kind of what Deacon Giles, what they do. And so we, we worked with them and, uh, Joe the Architect and team sat and designed this place to kind of fit their aesthetics and make sure that when people leave, they have a, they have a good feeling about what that, what they're all about. And then you can, you can roll through, you can roll through these. And then, and then the last space is we're calling the common space. And the idea here is to move through local producers at a much more frequent capacity. So we could work with a pasta maker and they may be there for a month and we'll do lessons on how to cook pasta and you could have dinner in there afterwards, or we'll work with a cheesemonger and it'll be all about, you know, aging of cheeses. The idea is, is with the other three, we went a little bit deeper with design, and they may be there for a year or two. This partner would come through on a month-to-three-month basis and and allow us to kind of show more, you know, more, you know, different styles of of food and wine, farmers' market, stuff like that. So same idea as the other rooms, just on a, on a more frequent basis. And the the other slides really just show, if you go through them, just show how the, it's more for design detail, show how it could look differently with different paint patterns and 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 all that stuff. But I think I'd like to take two seconds to talk a little bit about the operation of this. Because it's, while it seems like, the thought is that it feels like you're, you have the opportunity to go have different experiences that are really unique to each brand. It's centrally operated, it's one menu. We could certainly highlight menu items in in each room, depending on the type of that they go for. But but it's, it's it's a single restaurant. It's like, you know, when when we started thinking about the concept, I thought about the old Hilltop and all the, you know, Kansas City and all the different rooms. And it's like, that same idea, but like bringing, like giving the rooms to producers versus like just separating them out just to to have have different, different pockets. And 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 the idea is that you could come in, you you can kind of walk around instead of just cramming behind a bar and and having drinks before you sit down and have dinner. You could kind of walk around and decide where you want to have dinner. If there's space, you could sit in that space. And then, and and you could, you could kind of pick and choose. And the next time you come, you could, you could check out another area. On the retail shop, something that's really important to anybody in the craft beverage production space, if you have a taste in restaurants, to allow people to go home with the beer that they, or wine or cider that they try. So the the idea for that is, the idea for that space is simply that. It's it's very small, it's 160 square feet. We would not carry any liquor. We really wouldn't, we wouldn't carry any products other than the people who are being featured inside the restaurant. So if you sit down in Hermit Rush and have a great dinner, and you want to get a four-pack on your way home, you could stop on your way out and get it. It's, you know, it's, that's, that's the, that's the idea of the of the of the, what we're calling the bottle shop. There's only some, there'll be some retail fridges, fridges in there. There'll be one to two employees max. No consumers enter the space. You kind of come to the window, almost like a, if you were at a Little League park and you were going to order your cheeseburger, like that type of setup on the window. It's open only when the restaurant's open. And and we're almost forced for it to have small inventory, given the space. It is a separate business. It's not connected to the other business. It's the same ownership. A few years ago, there was a law passed that allowed ownership of both Section 15 and Section 12. And so we spent quite a lot of time over the past 18 months working with the ABCC to try to figure out the right, the right way to bring in this concept to life. And and under their direction and guidance, this is how we, this is how we landed on it. So deliveries would, for the bottle shop, would come in through this door you see here in the wood. And it would just be a kind of a separate, separate space, even though it's connected in thematics and and, you know, on the consumer side, it's certainly connected. So I hope that gave a decent overview. I'm sure there's questions. If it's architectural or design, I'll I'll let Alberto and Jeff speak. If it's concept or or anything I can chip in on, I'll certainly, I'll do my best to answer.
Turn me, Barbara.
Hi, this is Barbara again, thank you. It's, it sounds like a very interesting concept, and I'm sure that our members have some comments and questions. Before we move on, did you have anything else you wanted to present? Okay, all right. Kristen, did you have anything you wanted to say before I turn it over to the board?
Just a reminder that all public hearings will open, and then we will not vote on them the first one night. We can't open and close on the same night. So this will be continued to the year meeting on July 16. Overall, we think it's really cool. There's not that many, if any, concepts really like this. We appreciate kind of ways to figure out how to bring smaller local groups together, and especially in a place that normally would be kind of a too-high price point for a lot of these local groups. So, I don't know, we say a lot in these big commercial areas that it's like all national chains and everybody wants mom and pops. And I think this is kind of the, this is definitely the way to do that. So I don't know, we, we think that it's great, it's a great concept. We hope we see more concepts kind of like this. Some, I don't know, a lot of you have probably gone to breweries, I know, with with me and having, you know, smaller, smaller child. These, when you go to the breweries these days, you see a lot of like the carryalls with the baby. And it's, you know, in this type of concept, you, it's a way to feel comfortable in different spaces if you have kids or small kids, you can be in the main hall, whereas if you want to be, you know, have a different experience, it's there for you. So anyway, we, we think it's cool. We don't have any issues with the overall plan, and we'll have a decision drafted for you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. This is Barbara again. Joe, did you want to start us off? I don't know if there are any department comments as well, we could handle those at the same time.
Do you want to do the department comments, or?
If we have any.
We have a few, I can read them if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Sure.
Sure, they're all pretty standard engineering that they need to apply for backflow prevention device for the irrigation, fire suppression, chemical injection, and commercial properties, and they must schedule a cross-connection survey prior to sign-off by the Department of Public Works. And then the backflow devices shall be installed. Board of Health has their typical food establish, food establishment plan review to go to the Board of Health, an external grease trap, which has been considered as part of the previous plan, I believe. And then outdoor seating must comply with the smoke-free workplace law. So actually, pretty brief for comments, considering, you know, some other applications. So that's it.
Thank you, Kristen. Joe, have at it.
Yep, no, I don't, I mean, it sounds like a pretty cool concept. I, I'm just trying to locate exactly where, what space they're in. I think I have an idea of exactly, but I'm, could you explain again?
So it'll be on the backside of the mall, Joe, in between Legal Seafood and the Fogo de Chao, which was recently disapproved by by the board, which is on that corner. Lot, so it's on the, on the backside of the building of the mall.
Okay. All right, so it's on, so it's on the front side of the building, one in from the, that's a joke. We see that's, that's the front side from, for Burlington, rather than.
Oh, okay. I was thinking for the front end from Little Six Turnpike, so yes, it's a whole day for that. Yeah, true.
So is it one, so I know it's going to be one over from the corner, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and it's going to have outdoor seating?
Partially, yeah, some outdoor seating, yep.
One of the questions I had tonight, was Legal Seafood going to have outdoor seating as well, is this?
Legal Seafood, in the, in a minor engineering change, you guys approved five months ago, maybe, maybe less?
Yeah.
Did propose for Legal Seafood to have outdoor seating. So Legal Seafood is, there's, if you look at, if you can see, so, okay, so if you can see where the red bubble is over, and then there's a sidewalk plan, and then the main entrance to the mall, if Brady, you can go over to kind of where that oval shape, the half-moon shape is, in gray, to the right?
Half-moon shape in gray.
Right, right there, that's the main entrance. So Legal Seafood is directly to the left of where the hand is. And they are proposed in the new configuration to have outdoor seating.
Right, okay. So how many storefronts are we over here? They, they're going to, the outdoor seating, I assume, is going to be on that side as well with the, with this proposal?
Yep.
That's how many storefronts down from Legal?
So it's Legal Seafood, then there's a loading dock in between. If Brady, you can kind of go over to the left.
Okay, yep.
And then there's this, so there, there's, it's, it's significantly over.
There's also a screen wall that juts out there, too, I believe, that kind of separates. So you wouldn't be able to see Legal Seafood from where we are. There's a, this, right in front of the, the right side of this red bubble, there's a, there's a wall, there's where the black line is. That's a screen wall that protects the trash area, I believe. I'm not sure if it's being a screen wall.
Okay, all right, so it's not even really, because I guess my thought process was that they got it. I mean, you know, if every storefront, because it's, it sounds, it sounds to me, the way it's going, is that you've got destinations like this and restaurants that are popping up, you know, a lot of these locations. And it's, it'll be a little bit odd, you're going to, it's going to get scattered outdoor seating. And I was trying to see if there was a way that there was going to be, you know, some connectivity, you know, with those and have some, you know, uniform way they're treated across the way. But this, in this case, there seems to be a big, this kind of a separation between them anyway, and between at least Legal and and this, or the, this end of the building. So I think it's, it sounds like a great concept. I don't really have a lot of questions about it.
Okay, all right, thank you, Joe. Paul, would you like to, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant?
I have more questions than I can really contemplate. You know, is there any location within, you know, an hour's drive of Burlington that has a setup like this?
I mean, it's, this is the first time, I mean, I mean, I'd like to believe, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good question, and it's sort of a tricky question. This isn't a novel concept. The food, food hall is, is a version of it. I think what we do very differently, and what we're trying to do, is a food hall doesn't really shine. It's just like you get your food and you go sit in the middle. What we're trying to do is, is give these craft producers a lot of real estate to tell their story. And in that sense, it's the first time that's ever been done, that I, that we've been able to do in our research.
Well, I say good, go for it, because my lovely wife and I are at a stage where we go, at least twice a week, and we like legal, a lot of the restaurants around. So, yeah, this, this would be interesting, because it seems to me that you can, in one total location, have a significantly different atmosphere, if you will, in food. It's, it's almost like you're getting a wide selection, a, a, a restaurant that serves, you know, Italian, French, blah, blah. And and this, to me, is, is, it's going to be kind of like that. And it looks like, the way it's set up, the individual areas are going to be kind of isolated by themselves. In other words, if you want this kind of food, you go here, and there's seating there and so forth. If you want to go and experience the wine bar and the beer bar and so forth, you go over there. But but this is a first shot at it, so that I'll be interested in what my colleagues have to say, too. At my age, cool means, you know, northern Maine. Okay, thanks, that's all for now.
You hit on a, you hit on a key, a key point of the business plan, which is, right now, to do this, you have to drive, if you wanted to go to the the three people we have, you have to go from Salem, Massachusetts, to Malden, to Brattleboro, Vermont, and that's a long day. You know, so part of it is allowing a consumer to get that experience by going to Burlington in one, in in a matter of an hour. And so it's, it's like, and and I think, someone brought it up, it's really expensive to be a, so I have a small farm brewery in New York, and we can't, like, it, we just don't have the the ability to pay rent in a place like Burlington. So like, there's, there's, it give, like, there's this battle for for small producers to be able to come into high-rent locations. And yet, high-rent locations are where consumers are most easily accessible. And so a big part of what we're trying to do is like marry that gap and and allow for both sides to kind of come together more easily, I guess, is how I put it.
Thanks. Bill, did you want to weigh in?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I think the only things I have on this one is maybe landscaping out front. I think we saw that fairly quickly. Is that on the plan of specifically what that is? And then with regard to the protection of the eating outside, what is that material out front? And do we need kind of, I think we had another applicant recently that had like bollards inside of that, that would make that a bit more protected. So is that, what's that material that the the planters are in? Is that going to act as a bollard or is that concrete, or what is that?
So I can hop in, this is Jocelyn Gambon from BHB. So the green grass that's out in front of the planters, that's part of the the overall design of the Pocket Park that was originally approved. So that's a synthetic turf. Once you get to the planters, those, I believe, are just wood planters, and we haven't specified the plant material within those. I believe would probably be changed out seasonally. There is no plan currently to have any type of bollard protection in those planters. At that point, in the Pocket Park, I believe you're about 90 or so feet back from the the traveled way. And there's several, you know, curved planters in between the traveled way and then ultimately where the patio is. So it's not exactly the same condition that we reviewed similar at Get Farm when it was on the corner of that intersection. So it's just not something that's currently incorporated in the design at this time.
Yeah, so maybe we can take a look at the site plan again to see what that looks like with the other planters in the way and everything. Because they look pretty close, but again, it's pretty far away.
Yeah, Jocelyn, can you bring to us, I know, I don't know if we were prepared for it today, but can you bring, just at the next meeting, just because I agree with you, there's like more concrete and other things out front of this within the plan. But can, can you bring a little bit more detail to that at the next meeting, just to clarify that?
Yeah.
Sure.
And also, if you could bring, so if you're going to change the plants out. So I think we've been burnt, at least my experience, we've been burnt over the years, we forgot to plantings, not being specific on that. So if you're going to change them out seasonally, you know, let's be specific on what you're going to have, you know, for this season and what you're going to have for the next season.
Okay. Brett, have you put any thought into what type of plant material you'd be looking to put in those? I don't know if that's with.
I'm going to have to consult someone, I don't even, that's it.
Okay.
But for the next meeting, we'll certainly do that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Bill. So Brenda, would you like to ask any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, great concept, very excited for you guys to come to Burlington. One quick question is, you know, in the retail store, you would mention that you would be selling beer for, you know, for people to take home. Is that going to be cans, is that bottles, is there growlers, or what does that look like?
Yeah, it's, no, it won't be growlers, just because we won't have taps in there. It's, it's going to be bottles and cans. Realistically, it's probably mostly cans, because that's what most of the producers are using these days. It's, but it bottles or cans.
Okay, and then you said that there was going to be other food as well, or potentially, or no?
For, if, other food.
In the retail store?
I don't think, where we may do something like that is if we have, say, in that extra room, that the kind of quick room I mentioned, say we had like a pickler, someone who liked pickles in there for for a month. We may sell their pickles there to go, but like, the idea is, it's just, it's really for a place to bring product from the producers home. So if we had somebody who made something other than a beer or wine or cider in the space, which I do expect we have that, then maybe we would have something available there. But it's not, it's not like a part of the operational plan at the moment.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Mike, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo a member, Rappaport, that this is a really cool concept. I like what you're doing here. Very excited for you to open, I think it's unique. Couple of questions. Looks like there's a lot of places to drink here. How are you going to like mitigate like too much alcohol consumption from room to room? It seems like that might be a problem with all these different places where you can drink. How is that going to be controlled?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's, it's the same. And ultimately, it comes down to operations and control. I think what, our concept falls through if our producers don't, if our producers, like the whole, this whole concept is about being a gallery for them. And so the last thing, like, the last, like, when we talk to them about this concept, the last thing any of them want is any issues with overdrinking in a space that's theirs when we're operating on their behalf. So we take all this pretty seriously, and 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 it's not a drinking establishment. I think that, that's, if people who have frequented, you know, craft beer bars, Jack's Abbey in Framingham, there is a sense of kind of, it's different than a bar. I don't know, if you're familiar with it, you're kind of familiar with it. But the idea is that we, we police it. You know, you're not, you know, you're not allowed to, like, there's, you're not allowed to, it just, and like any place would police it. We're watching it, recording, we're, we're, you have to sit to get food, it's wait service. So it's, there's, there's parts of it that are just like a normal restaurant and how you would police it at a normal restaurant. I think the only difference for us is, we take it really seriously, because if our, if Idle Hands has an incident and they get blamed for it, when it's really us who do it, our, our concept, you know, pretty much gets, goes away, because the next, the next person, Idle Hands, isn't going to come in. So it, it, it is an operational control, but it's, it's, it's critical to our success.
And my other question.
Can I have one thing, Mike? And Brett, we had a alcohol subcommittee meeting with some of the members of the Board of Selectmen to talk through some of the kind of like operational type, type matters. And so, you know, we're also working with the Selectmen on that as well.
Thank you, Christine.
We've been hearing their input.
My other question, that's a good answer. I've been to many breweries and I've seen a lot of the different setups. My other question is kind of more of a, just a curiosity question. I like what you said about how you're giving smaller breweries an opportunity
you're giving smaller breweries an opportunity to get into a place like Burlington where otherwise they wouldn't be able to afford that type of spot. Was there any attempt to try it? I mean, New England is kind of like uh leading the the craft beer movement right now as far as IPAs and even some stouts. Was there any attempt to try and get like some of the local places like uh Night Shift or Trillium or even Treehouse? That would be a great way for them to get into our market. Just a thought.
Yeah, and I talked to Robert Night Shift quite a bit about it. It's interesting, like those I love. I know those guys and I love all of them. They make incredible product. They don't need us. You know, if they wanted to open in Burlington, they have the cash to do it. They're very successful. Um, we came close to having Night Shift be part of the project. They ended up, um well, we were gonna before COVID, open a place in Philadelphia and expand kind of into, you know, central, central, central USA. But you know, it's funny, we want like we want the the purpose serves different it's if you're like the best case study for us is an unknown artist that becomes the next Night Shift. Like, that's where this concept really, to me, really steps up because there's so many good producers out there that don't have a place in Fort Point that aren't in the middle of all the traffic that, you know what I mean? So it's like it's a chicken.
Someone like a
I'd love to have
Someone like a
more traffic.
Someone like Vitamin C maybe in Waymouth. That's a that's a good one.
Exactly. I give them a chance to get that traffic. Yeah, but trust me, Night Shift is going to get a lot more traffic for us, which would be good to kind of offset everything. But it's that's the balancing act. But you know, I I love the tenants we have. They're all they're all they're incredible, incredible what they do. And I think they have a lot of growth in front of them, so.
And there's potential to rotate there, right?
Yeah, it's not just potential, it's the it's the plan.
Awesome. Don't throw the question, Madam Chair. The great concept. I love it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Ernie, you're up.
I think most of my questions have been asked. I I just I'm I'm pleased to see uh somebody thinking out of the box concept where the the cost of doing business in Burlington is 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 shared so smaller players can get involved. That's that's really cool. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Um, I just have a couple of curiosity questions. Um, I think the concept sounds really fun and exciting, and I'm I'm looking forward to going there myself. Um, I am I have one question. I thought you had said that the menu is the same throughout the throughout all of the different rooms. Is that correct?
It's new with different things featured. It it just comes down to that's another operations that you can't like um so we have a fairly small kitchen running food everywhere. But if you're in if you're in Idle Hands, we're gonna like we'll have pretzels. You can order pretzels everywhere, but it's going to be the cheese plates and charcuterie board we featured in Hermit Rush. But if you because again, say, say me and you, friends, we wanted to go have dinner together and you really wanted Hermit Rush, I really wanted Idle Hands, we decide to sit at Hermit Rush. I may want the pretzel. And and so like we want to make sure we can have the food everywhere, but the menu
Understand.
and and it would spotlight different things.
Okay, I was just curious. It it just sounds like a really fun concept. I'm looking forward to to learning more about it and trying it out when you come. So um, really creative. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the listening audience that wanted to ask any questions or make any comments? Jen and
Seeing no one.
Okay, all right. Well, then, um, I think we are going to continue this for our next meeting and as as we've said, we we have to two meetings. We can't vote and open and vote in the same night, but um we had just a few questions for you, I think, about the outdoor area and about um the possibility of meeting barriers for outdoor seating or or what's the distance between the parking lot. So those are things that we will have, we would want you to answer at the next meeting. Was there anything else, Kristin, for this applicant to bring back to us?
Uh, no, I think it was that Jocelyn was the one to just kind of give us a um just a peek into um what those other barriers were within the planting areas. I will say that it would be fantastic, um, since we have such an expert in terms of local and regional brews and spirits, if not in a planning board format, but in some sort of format. If Brett, you were ever willing to kind of give us kind of a regional uh outlook into uh what the craft brew and what the craft spirits were or, you know, in and around the region, I think it would be a huge lesson to try to figure out how to promote more in Burlington and the region.
Yeah, no, for sure. One of the things we're going to do is even for tenants who even for partners who aren't with us at the current moment, we're going to promote everybody because the thought is we hope they come next. And so we'll have like
Yeah.
maps to how to get to all the great southeries and breweries. So there's going to be a lot of like promotion about craft culture everywhere inside of the space.
Awesome. Great. All right, thank you.
Everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Yes, may I have a motion, please?
This is Paul. I make a motion to continue this man at the planning board meeting of July 16, 2020.
This is Mike. I'll second it.
Chairman LaRue. Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino. Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Raymond. I'm sorry, Member Gathney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. We'll see you at the next hearing on July 16. Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Bye bye.
Um, okay, I believe our next item is item 7F on page 13. Item 7F is a public hearing petition to rezone property for the general business district, 207 Cambridge Street, submitted by the planning board.
Yeah, you don't need the motion above that.
I didn't think so. Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
Is the is the applicant here to present?
We are the applicant.
We are, of course.
It's us.
So, um, Kristin, did you want to give us a brief overview of why we're doing this?
Sure. Uh, I asked Brady to try to get a street view of 207. I don't know if he can pop that up. 207 Cambridge Street is the Burlington Auto Park Auto Supply. There it is, the beautiful building. So as you know, um, most of Terry Ave is zoned IG. The front of Cambridge Street here, the very front of this building is zoned BG, but the back two thirds of the auto supply is IG. Um, and in conversation in the past is in terms of the town center back in 2004, 2005, probably before that, um, as well as more recently, I don't know, maybe five years ago or so, um, just talked about kind of appropriate businesses in the town center, especially fronting Cambridge Street, really within the heart of the town center. And some IG businesses, especially those that included storage and warehousing and auto supplies and others, um, were something that we really didn't want to be continuing to promote on the street frontage. Um, I know we have a lot of kind of contractor garages kind of behind Cambridge Street on and behind the Murray Plazas. Um, but with this building, um, Burlington Auto Supply leaving, we wanted to kind of really take a proactive approach um to think about this in terms of a BG rezoning for the whole that whole building, um, to promote more um kind of pedestrian friendly fronting businesses along Cambridge Street. So um, that's the intent. We'll be submitting it to September. There is I just want to get, you know, your thumbs up to yes, submit it for September before the end of this meeting. Um, otherwise, we'll continue it to the meeting on July 16. And I know other members were part of this discussion to move this forward. And if they have anything to say before we get you go to the rest of the board, I or just go through the board with every your choice.
Okay, um. I I think this is pretty straightforward, so I'm just going to quickly run through the members and see if anyone has any questions. Joe?
Uh, no, actually, I this was something that I uh am fully behind. I uh, as I've mentioned many times in the past, this was a piece of the of the area of the center of town that years ago I would I was attempting to get rezoned into retail. So, um, you know, when this opportunity came up, I I actually came forward and said, I think we should take the initiative and move forward on that. Um, I think it's going to be much more in in line with, you know, the vision of the downtown center. I think it's gonna it's a it's a component that right now, quite honestly, that area in there is just really out of place as an industrial area. It doesn't, you know, it's IG and it doesn't really belong IG. It should really have been retail all along. So I think this is this is one big positive move, uh to further our vision in the downtown center. I think it's a it's it's I'm very happy that we're moving forward on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Paul, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, thank you, though.
Okay, Bill?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Brenda?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mike?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Ernie?
Uh, one or two questions. Uh, have have we had any conversation at all with the, I believe it's one property owner, if I'm mistaken. Have we had any conversation with the property owner at all?
Um, we have. I haven't. I know I've been working with Melissa, um, as well as Rick Parker, um, to get in contact with the um, the family group that um they're um that owns this property. Um, to try to get the right person on the phone. Um, so I personally haven't. I don't have an update, but it's we're actively, um, we have I have had a call about um, reaching out to the right person to help us and understand, you know, to communicate what we're looking for here. I had a company, um, an HVAC company, I think it was, that was thinking about the site and I was like, whoa. So um, that started really a conversation about trying to really get in front of the property owner to to express our vision for the site and the building.
And and by uh by rezoning, it doesn't make any of the existing businesses in there other than the uh the automotive place up front?
No.
Is it doesn't make
The rest of the building, if you recall, the rest of the building is a um, a market, an Indian restaurant, and there was a karate studio in there. All of well, not the karate studio could be there, but the market and the um restaurant are pursuant to the town center guidelines. Um, an overlay, which doesn't change. Um, it's just really the underlying zoning which would have permitted an IG type use that we're trying to
I'm just I'm just thinking that if it if it was my piece of property and I owned a piece of property, I'd really like to be able to comment on the rezoning application. That's all. Other than that, I think it is proper and correct to change the zoning to to uh EG and
All right, thank you.
Doesn't my comment.
Thank you. Um, I do not have any questions. Um, is there any?
Madam Chair, could I just make one more comment? Yeah, before we move on. Um, and I I agree with Ernie. I think, you know, I think there will be a process here. I think you know, it was an opportunity. I think we needed to kind of move on. Um, but there will be plenty of opportunity for input along the way. I would imagine um, the property owners certainly will have input, but the one thing we need to keep in mind and uh is that, you know, that the the use that we're looking to create there or to rezone it to is actually a higher and better use for uh for the real estate, for the owner of the real estate than IG would be. So it's actually a higher use. Um, so again, you know, they'll have, I'm sure, plenty of opportunity through the process. I just think it was essential that we started it, um, you know, prior to anything once it was vacated, prior to anything else going in there and kind of muddying up the whole process. I think it was it was it was a good opportunity, Kristin, to act active, you know, very quickly, and I have to applaud that, so.
Good. And it it seems to me also that it would, as you're saying, it would make the property more valuable, not less valuable, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the listening audience that wants to weigh in on this matter? Okay, hearing no one. Okay, um, I am ready for a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of July 16, 2020.
Uh, so moved.
Chairman LaRue.
Second.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Gathney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Um, thanks, everybody. Next on our agenda is item eight minutes, the minutes for June 4, 2020 that Brady passed around. Um, is everyone, does anyone have a chance to review them? And are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. I would like a motion, please.
May I make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the minutes for June 4, 2020?
Second, Bill.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Pemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Gathney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
That's it. One more discussion item.
Yes, um, okay. The next discussion item is item number nine A, and it's a discussion regarding temporary requests for outdoor dining guidelines. As I'm sure you'll recall, at our last meeting, we discussed and approved a joint statement between the planning board and the Board of Selectmen um, just expressing our support for local businesses that are trying to open. Um, since then, the state has come out with their very specific guidelines for businesses that are opening, and they've done an excellent job. But um reviewing those guidelines and in discussions with our town manager and with the Board of Selectmen representative, Joe Morandi and with Kristin, we thought there were a few other things we wanted to tweak, and these are not um they're not onerous. I don't think they're going to be difficult for businesses, and some of them actually are designed to help the businesses. So they are in your staff report. Um, but just a very quick overview, um, what these guidelines that were proposed, I mean, we'd like to vote on tonight. These would be included then with all whenever businesses came in looking for additional outdoor seating, and this would go along with that. So um, what does the guideline say is that, of course, first of all, all the businesses have to abide by the guidelines set forward by the state. And then in addition to those state guidelines, there were two items we wanted to require. The first one being that restaurants must provide protective barriers around any new outdoor seating if the seating is within a parking lot or roadway. And I think I think that's what to say is adjacent to.
So so um, let me, let's go through them and then Barbara, I will explain
Okay, we'll get back to that. Um, okay, so
The second one Because I know this point of discussion.
Okay, the second requirement would be that music and television noise must be kept to a minimum in businesses that are within 200 feet of a residential property. And then there were three recommendations. The first one is that restaurants should require reservations whenever possible to reduce the possibility of patrons gathering while waiting for tables. And restaurants should put a time limit on dinner tables, and restaurants can choose what that time limit should be that is appropriate for their particular clientele, because as you can imagine, someplace like the Capital Girl is probably going to have a longer time limit than someplace like um, Tony C's or or a more casual restaurant. Um, this would keep lines down. His hosts will be able to better estimate when reservations can be seated and will also help keep tables turning over for greater profitability. Um, lastly, restaurants should consider providing protective barriers around any new outdoor seating if the seating is adjacent to a parking lot, parking lot or roadway. Personally, I think that protective barriers around new seating if it is adjacent to a parking lot or roadway or in a parking lot or roadway should be a requirement, not a recommendation. Um, we all want to see these business open, businesses open as quickly as possible, and we want them to be successful, and nothing will squash the success than a car driving into a table full of people. Um, we need to protect the people that are dining in these new outdoor seating areas. So I would request that we make the protective barriers a requirement both in parking lots or if they're adjacent to parking lots or roadways. That would be my suggestion. And I am ready to hear all your comments. But Kristin, did you you said you wanted to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I know, just in terms of our conversation and in conversations I've had with Melissa to talk to us about it. Um, so I but I did want to comment first on the recommendation for the time limits. It was something that Barbara, you personally heard from restaurant, a restaurant manager. Uh, Rick Parker had also heard from other restaurant managers, and Melissa and I talked about it quite a bit in terms of if you're at a restaurant, they don't want to say, okay, you've been sitting here for three hours and you, you know, what are you doing? Because they need to make money because it's only they can only have a few tables. So um So, um, the point of that piece isn't to put a burden on the restaurants, but actually help the restaurants in communicating to patrons that the town has recommended that we have limits, so get out of here now. But that we're the bad guy, instead of the restaurant saying, you know, it's, and as Barbara, you had said, that when people are seated or if they make reservations, if they're kind of no up front that it's an hour and a half and then we're trying to, you know, they, they don't feel as, um, kind of pushed. So that piece of it wasn't supposed to at all be onerous on the restaurant, but really help them turn over their tables. Um, to the piece about barriers, so there was kind of this question of when you have seating in a parking lot or in, like, if you have seating where cars are or cars expect to be, um, do you need barriers? And then the question of if you're on the sidewalk adjacent to a street or parking lot that has a curb between the two, is it's, do you still need that protective barrier in that location as much as you do in that, the car dominant area? And I guess what I wanted to do in this group and why they are in two separate places, um, is, um, talk through it, because Melissa is also trying to talk with the selectmen as to, you know, is this everywhere? Is this in the car, car areas? Is it on the sidewalk too? So I just wanted to talk it through with this group in terms of, you know, I think we agree that if they're in the parking lot or in, in the roadway, we need absolutely move that. Um, if you're on the sidewalk, do you need it all the time? When do you need it? I mean, you have, uh, the ginger, ginger, no, ginger pad? No, what am I thinking about? Sweet ginger.
Sweet ginger.
In the town center, they have tables out, they don't have protective barriers. Um, on, in front of, uh, uh, you know, they don't, I don't think they have protective barriers between that and Third Ave. Um, and just kind of thinking through it a little bit and kind of what your comfort level was in those areas. Um, because a lot of the areas in these very small restaurants have a really small area for parking, that it would be a little bit prohibitive, so, anyway, we're just working through it. This whole thing is temporary. We've had, I think, 18 requests so far. I think 10 letters have gone out, um, and we have a task force of Andy, Andy Uggerson, the building department, myself, Melissa Tentakolas and the Board of Health, as well as Jerry McDonough from the Police Department and Mike Canepen from Fire, um, to weigh in on these proposals. So we're kind of meeting, uh, once or twice a week to review what we have coming in. Um, and, you know, it's a, it's an exercise that we're trying to really find the right groove, and I think this is, these type of guidelines would be helpful, um, in that, but, but anyway, so I throw that out for discussion.
Okay, thank you. And, and another thing, um, I think maybe we could consider would be that we could word it somehow so that, um, barriers are required unless, um, a waiver was granted by the police or the building inspector, because there are some situations where the curb, there, where the sidewalk is very wide and there are trees and other things in between the seating and the roadway. It's not just the curb, the way it is at Sweet Ginger. So I think we probably want to have some flexibility there and maybe we leave that up to the police or up to Andy. Um, but we have to be careful how we phrase that so that when it is those dangers, that is one of those dangerous situations, we have protection.
Yep, no, and, and I will say with all of this, and we were finding out the liability, liability, liability. Um, it's funny, because even the town has, we have, we had a few Jersey barriers that were, oh, you know, that we could offer to, to, um, to people who couldn't get them. But, um, once we start approving or saying your barriers are good enough, then we start being kind of, well, you said it was safe enough. So really, it's this kind of test of, we, we want to give, we want to put the onus on the property owners to be making the decisions on behalf of their patrons. We're reviewing these, we want to, you know, in areas where you're parking a lot, I think it's fair to say we want barriers, but, you know, at what point, in no way did the police want to start approving the barriers and saying they're sufficient or not sufficient, because if they're not permanently cemented to the ground, there's really, you know, no way that you can say it's good enough or not good enough. So, um, you know, we want to get businesses up and running and try to do the best we can, but, you know, don't want it to-
I understand that.
-go the wrong way.
Maybe you flip it then and you say that it's recommended unless the town, upon inspection, decides that you have to have it. So, I'm not sure. I'd love to hear what the other members think about this. I think it's really important that we find a way to protect patients, but at the same time, I understand we can't take on the liability ourselves. So, um, who wants to jump in on this one?
I will, Madam Chair. It's Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, I think it's important, definitely important to protect our, our diners and patrons. And, um, if, um, you have tables set up in a parking lot, there definitely needs to be some stronger permanent, um, barriers, more, more permanent barriers. But I don't think it is as necessary, like with the case of Sweet Ginger in front, because we don't have those barriers when people walk on that sidewalk when they're normally walking. Also, I was speaking to a, a restaurant owner today and a lot of them are hurting really bad, as everyone knows. She can't afford to put up Jersey barriers all over her parking lot. So is there a cheaper alternative that'll do what we need to protect the, um, a cheaper, more viable alternative than having them set up Jersey barriers all over their parking lot? Because it's not cost effective for a lot of them.
That's one of the reasons we did not say Jersey barriers. We said protective barriers, because there are other ways you can have protective barriers that are less expensive than Jersey barriers. As we know, um, there are bollards and there are people who have big planters that have, they're structured, it's such that they could stop a car. So I agree with you, um, we, we don't want to dictate Jersey barriers everywhere because of the expense and also because they're ugly. And if people come up with nicer, like prettier fences and flowers and things to, to protect their patrons, we would certainly not want to discourage them from doing that.
But I think if you are changing, like, the, the, the plan of a restaurant, like putting tables where there was parking before, I think it's almost necessary. You need something stronger and permanent. But as far as like on the sidewalk in front of a restaurant, I don't know if it's as necessary. I just, I like what you said about we recommend, um, and if, uh, by a town, a later town inspection, we find it is not, um, you know, not working well enough, that I like the giving that, that little option there. That was a good, I like what you said about that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anyone else want to jump in?
I will say that-
I can talk, I, 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 I'm thinking, so today, right, if we have a new restaurant, like we just had the applicant, and there's outdoor seating, we're looking to get to have them bollards. So I, I'm trying to make that leap to say, I understand the one in the parking lot, but if it's just like any other applicant we have today that's adjacent to parking, and, um, you know, from the time that I've been on the board, uh, and it hasn't been long, there's always something in the news about a car going through a storefront. So we have been requiring that, and I, and I, I get the liability, but exact, that's exactly what we're doing today. We are approving these things with bollards. And which, and if we don't, where goes the liability? If, if the town didn't approve it with protection, you know, as planners, I think that's our responsibility. So when I look at that and when we talk about other, other folks that have trees in front, if, you know, or, or something that would protect them naturally, I would interpret that to be a protective barrier, a protective barrier that they would need, and they have, so they don't have to put a Jersey barrier. They have three trees in front that's going to stop a car. Um, and I, I think it's, it's our duty as elected officials to protect, uh, you know, the, the, the townspeople and the customers for those that if you're going to put it, like any other applicant, adjacent to a parking lot and/or roadway, that there should be some protection there. I think, I think really, I think we should do that. So, and how do you do that inexpensively? Um, and like you said, the town has a couple of Jersey barriers. I'm sure, you know, a lot of people are kind of scrambling for the same thing. Um, I was up in New Hampshire the other day, cruised along 101, which has got a lot of places, and they got the same thing, they put Jersey barriers around there. So I, it was, it's timely that this has come up. Um, and maybe I would just ask, you know, hope people that kind of, or maybe have other contacts in other towns, what are they doing? Um, are they making an option? Are they making a requirement? Are they coming up with, uh, different ideas to, to help them out? Instead, maybe the cement Jersey barriers, maybe the plastic oriented ones that you fill with water, uh, that maybe they're cheaper, um, you know, th- those type of options. And maybe other folks in other towns have already been, been, uh, been past this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Um, the only thing, and I agree with you, and I think it is our responsibility, the only thing I want to throw out there is that, right now, I do think time is of the essence because businesses are already doing this. So that means patrons are already sitting there and some of them may be in a, in a less than safe situation. So, um, I do think we need to move as quickly as possible to get these guidelines out there.
Madam Chair, this is Ernie, just with a few comments if I could. Coincidentally, I was talking to somebody yesterday, actually my wife, who went out to dinner with, uh, at the lunch at Tony C's with a couple of her friends and was sitting on the sidewalk, so, and, and I noticed this was coming up for discussion, and I asked her, did you feel safe? And my wife is not the, yeah, I won't say she's extremely timid, but she's, she's, uh, she watches out for herself. And I asked her if she, if she felt, uh, safe. And she said she, and she was with two other people, and I guess Tony C's has their tables right up next to the window, so there is a little bit of sidewalk between the table and the street. And with the, with the cars parked there, uh, she said, yeah, she, she didn't even give it a second thought. Maybe because the cars were parked there, maybe not. But the crux of the matter, all the way back to the very beginning of this, is that we're trying to make it, uh, we're trying to keep as many restaurants from going out of businesses as we can. And obviously want to, we want to do it in a safe way, but, uh, a barrier can be anywhere from, uh, you know, five pots of panties to a, uh, three foot thick wall. And then it depends on what kind of a vehicle hits it. If a truck hits it, then it's going to be heavier than whatever. Uh, if I was a restaurant owner, I definitely want to make sure I was protecting my patrons and I'd do everything I could to protect them. Uh, and I, I would prefer to recommend, uh, if it was adjacent to a parking lot or a street to recommend something, uh, and make it mandatory if it was in the street or a parking lot to have some sort of a barrier. Because I'm, I, I would defer to the, uh, to the, uh, good sense of the restaurant owner. What I have to say, naturally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ernie.
Madam Chair?
Anyone? Yes, Joe?
This is, uh, Joe. I just wanted to, I just kind of add a little bit to that. I, I think as Bill had brought up, you know, obviously with, with, you know, when, when a new applicant comes in and their intention is to have permanent seating outside, it's a lot easier to deal with the issue, right? Because we know it's going to be existing forever. We have a lot of these restaurants that are only under this temporary order and, you know, may never intend on having outdoor seating once they're able to bring all their seating indoors. So I think we are, clearly we need to deal with this, you know, the temporary, uh, situation a little differently than we would a permanent situation. Um, you know, so I don't, I don't know if there's ways, creative ways, but I do certainly know that, you know, I, I could, I could think of some places where they have outdoor seating right now, where, where there is parallel parking, you know, along the walkway that, you know, sidewalk that they're using. You know, maybe things as simple as, you know, the owner and employees park their cars such that it's blocking all, you know, it's-
Yeah.
They get off ahead of time so that, you know, they, they, they're permanently going to leave their cars in one location that's going to block all traffic off from anybody going there.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea from Ernie, to put it right up there, but have the cars block it. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, and get a little bit creative with these things. If, if somebody is, you know, is, is inclined to spend a little more money, maybe they, you know, get the big pots and put some heavy, you know, whatever it is, whether it's, you know, this is only going to be an issue during some months, obviously, right? So, um, you know, whether it's water in there or whether it's dirt, they put a tree in there or planting's enough that would at least slow a car or, you know, at least a rolling car would stop it somewhat or whatever. But, no, if they can get creative and say, yeah, we're gonna, you know, we're, we're going to locate it in an area where we can use our own vehicles and take three or four of the front spots to block all traffic off from that area, and you wouldn't know it, they're just sitting in the, in the parking spots that happen to block the traffic. You know, maybe those are things that they can think, again, I mean, I, you know, these, these businesses are having a tough enough time as it is. We can't be expecting them to, well, spend a lot of money when this, literally, that mandate could go away a month from now if they found a vaccine. But, you know, if this, there are factors that could change this almost immediately and if these people are, you know, maybe the other part of it is, you know, maybe they realize they like the outdoor seating, which would be phenomenal, because I'd like to see more of it all over the place, you know? In those cases, we have to deal with it as a permanent change and, and, and require, you know, more permanent fixes to these things, you know? Um, but I, I almost want to, maybe, you know, the, the requirement is that they do something and present us with a plan that is going to be sufficient to block the traffic, whether it's their plan or our plan. Um, you know, if they present a plan that's creative and, and we're like, yeah, that's not a bad idea, you know, maybe we let them do that, you know?
That, Madam Chair, it's Mike. Aren't we just talking about, uh, temporary, temporary guidelines anyway? This isn't anything permanent.
We are talking about temporary, yes. And I like, I like the idea, I like the idea of thinking creatively, like you're saying, Joe, and that's an argument for saying, just using a vague term like protective barrier. And, you know, and that sort of puts the onus on the, on the business owner to come up with his, his or her own creative solutions and the town wouldn't really be involved unless the police or the building department determined that there was an unsafe situation.
Madam Chair, I'd like to chime in, please. So, you know, what, we can go back to, say, you know, the, the Sweet Ginger scenario where they're on the sidewalk, um, you know, they have maybe four people working. That wouldn't protect the, um, you know, the, the range of walkway that they're actually utilizing, you know, four cars. They could parallel park and, and, you know, but then there's already, I guess, kind of limited parking over there anyways, you know? So if, I, I agree with Ernie that, you know, we kind of should be putting forth a recommendation and, and let the business owner, because these people are struggling. You know, some of these businesses are not going to make it if we make it harder for them, um, to open. And, you know, and, and I think that there is only may, you know, the ones I guess that were, that I'm speaking for are really those small business owners, because, you know, the Eddie Vs, the Tony Cs, you know, uh, I've been to several of these establishments so far just to kind of see how things were going and, and how they were conducting their business. And they have the room and they have the means. Um, it's the small businesses I, I think are the greatest concern and, and, you know, and these, these are our neighbors. So, you know, I think it's really important for us to protect them. So again, marrying what Ernie said, I think it's more, I think it, it really should be more of a recommendation, um, than, than a requirement for, you know, situations where they're on a sidewalk.
Barbara?
Yes?
Paul Raymond? Yes, I was just thinking, if, uh, you might, uh, ask the traffic safety officer, because he, you know, he might have suggestions and so forth and, uh, because, you know, that's an area of his responsibility too, but just a thought.
Thank you. Um, I, I think all of these, every, I appreciate everyone's input. It's, it's a tough situation. I have a question, Kristin, and I, I don't know if you're going to know the answer to this, but have we asked town council about what our responsibility is? In other words, if we make it a recommendation and there's a terrible accident and people are injured, are we responsible because we did not require it?
No, no. Melissa's been working with town council quite a bit. And what we have in front of you here, I think she, she ran by the first draft. Um, I'll check with her if she ran all of this, but, um, no. Because it, the biggest issue is if the town approves something to be put in place, then the police department is saying it's okay, whereas that's where we get into kind of the issues. Um, and that, so, but when we say, you, you know, you should do this, um, it, it's a recommendation, um, and the, the onus is on the property owner.
Okay, so I hear everybody and I completely agree that we need to help these businesses get open as soon as- get open as soon as possible. But I, I personally fall more on the side of Bill in that I think it is our responsibility to make sure that these people are safe. But I don't think how they do that necessarily. And I think that there are creative, less expensive ways they can do it with big planters, and which aren't, not very expensive, or bollards. And they have bollards that you can move around, and I've seen. And I think there are ways that businesses can do it without spending a lot of money. That's where I come down on this. But, you know, this is a vote of the board, I have one vote, just like everyone else. So that's where I come down.
Can I make a few comments, Barbara?
Of course.
Um, so I just will, just, I think there are some excellent comments brought up. Some of the reviews that we've done so far, if there's adjacent parking spaces next to the outdoor seating, we've required that they be employee-only spaces, just for those directly adjacent to any of the parking lot seating, as well as if they're back into the parking, if they're back into the parking lot seating, that those be, and that, that's only been, you know, two to three spaces potentially. As well as recommend that they have, in the areas, if they don't have a tent, that they use tables with an umbrella, so it's very clear that that's an area of outdoor seating and not parking area. You know, even past the Jersey barrier, that if you see an umbrella, you say, okay, it's a outdoor seating. And I know it's something that we want to promote more of, the tables with umbrellas. What was the last thing I was going to say? Oh, Melissa Tentakalas, there's a couple of grant programs out to try to help business, small businesses get up and running, help the streetscapes. DOT just put out a grant program, so we're, I had a conference call with her this week, working to try to figure out ways to match the state funding to local businesses to help them get open, you know, those businesses that don't, can't afford Jersey barriers and other things, to try to make, to try to figure out ways that we can help small businesses connect with some grant programs that are out there.
Okay, thank you, Kristin. So in the interest of being timely, because this is something that's happening already, I want to just sort of poll the board and, and ask everybody to weigh in on either option A or option B. Option A would be require protective barriers without dictating what those should be. Option B would be recommend protective barriers. And I just want everyone to tell me where they land, require or recommend, and then let's write this and vote on it. How's that sound?
Okay, so can I, let me clarify. So you're saying for required A would be combined with E to say, in the parking lot and adjacent is required versus the, the having them separate, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So option A would be that we would require protective barriers in both instances when they're either in the parking lot or adjacent to parking or roadway. That's option A. Option B would be we require it when it's in the parking lot, but if it's adjacent to a parking lot or roadway, we just recommend. Okay? Everybody get it? All right, so, Joe, A or B?
So that is when it's in the parking lot, we require. When it's adjacent, we recommend. That's the option.
That's A. That's B. Okay, Paul, A or B?
I, 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 I hate to require if you don't have to, so I would make it recommend.
So you're B. Bill?
A, please.
A. Brenda?
Recommend, please. B.
I think B. Mike?
Um, I want B, but I would like, subject to town inspection. And we can, like you said, we can, we have to inspect it. And if it doesn't meet town inspection, we, you'd have to change it to up, to up it.
Okay, Ernie?
Uh, recommend, please.
Okay. So the B, I, I would vote A, but the Bs have it at a five to two. I would, I do like what Mike said, that we could go with option B, but put a line in there about if the, if upon inspection, the town determines that the situation is unsafe, then the, the business owner will have to provide greater safety.
Barbara, I didn't vote on B, I just wanted to clarify B.
Oh.
But I will vote on B, but I, and I, my, my point was that, so B isn't necessarily recommend. B is somewhere between. If it's going to be in the parking lot, then they're going to require it.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
And if it's not going to be in the parking lot, but adjacent to an area, again, it's temporary. This is not-
Right.
This is not something that, you know, once it becomes permanent, then they recruit, then it's a whole different ballgame. You know, I think so for B purposes, I think, you know, for that purpose, I think B would be where I'd go.
So I'm asking the board, then, with that, with that understanding, do we feel comfortable voting to direct staff to write these guidelines up as we've discussed? And vote on them tonight? And then the Board of Selectmen will also be voting on this, I believe, at their next meeting.
So, clarification purposes, Barbara, if I could? So the, the recommend is as printed in the staff report, I believe, is that correct? And the require is changing the bottom part to also be required, correct?
Well, no, I had it on option B, so what that means is-
Printed in the staff report with the question that Mike brought up, subject to town inspection, which I will say that we, just in terms of that, what I was saying earlier about town approvals, that I just need to run that by Melissa and council. So if we can do that, I-
I don't think, I don't think what Mike was suggesting was town approval. What Mike was suggesting is it's recommended. However, if the town inspects it and finds, and deems it unsafe, the business owner will be instructed to increase the safety. That doesn't mean we're-
Okay.
Blessing it. We're just saying, do better.
Okay, yeah, I mean, they all, all of them are inspected, just.
Okay. All right. So does everyone feel comfortable with that? Let's do a roll call on that. So we're instructing staff to print up the guidelines as we've just discussed and hand them over to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, roll call. Chairman Larue?
Yes.
And Chairman Npamba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond? Member Espaio?
Yes, I'm comfortable.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
All right, great. So we are at the end of our agenda. Does anybody have any other items that they need to bring up before we close for the night? Great.
Just to say, this is the old business of, I'm sorry, just-
Oh, Joe.
Well, I know, just to be quick, I just, you know, I, I think we've all kind of alluded to it in different emails or whatever about the, the urgent care center with the bollards and things like that. But I think Kristin is, Kristin and I think Brady are on top of that, right? And, and working that, moving forward, getting them to comply. Or at least, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out where those bollards, they just came up. I thought we had said to them, given them a, an option of the bollards that were cast iron and whatnot. And the next thing you know, they, again, ignored our requests or, or, or input and went and did their own thing again.
Yeah, so it's a little tricky. We're working through it, but it's a little tricky since we approved it. Unlike the self-stored, where it came back to you formally for a minor engineering change, they have, they're not back to you formally. So therefore, the decision reads that they should, the bollards shall be in muted color. So to, so we're working through kind of ways in which we can go with what was approved, what was shown, what was on the rendering, and try to get the best we can get out there.
I don't remember any discussion, I don't remember any discussion about bollards in all over the place like that. I didn't see it on the plan, but I, maybe I missed it. I, I, but I, I saw a rendering, I didn't see a single bollard in the rendering.
Yeah, and that's my point. We're working through kind of what was, what was approved, what we, what the scope of what we looked at. And what we can, you know, outside of this process, what we can, if it's not, if it wasn't there, not wasn't there, but if it was there and we made a decision, just trying to figure out the scope outside of that, that we can push to change. But it, it's an ongoing discussion. I think we get an email from them daily, and Brady's doing a great job managing those conversations.
And I think in the future, we're not going to say muted color anymore for bollards, right? I think that's-
That, yeah, we've taken note of that comment.
I don't think that was ever mentioned, I don't think that was ever mentioned in any meaning I can recall about being a muted colored bollard.
Right. I think, yeah. I don't remember discussions about bollards earlier, because I would have, clearly, I would have, we would have at that point jumped on it and said, these are the bollards that you should be, if you're going to be using them, you need to comply with the downtown specs.
I think they should be applied to downtowns. But I think our, our problem is we didn't specify, because we assumed, because we had, we had just gone through that with the adjacent applicant, that we assumed that that would be in the plan and, and the decision, that that would be the bollard. But we, 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 it was somehow included to say it was a muted color, which yellow's a muted color.
Yellow's not a muted color. But I will say that those, those bollards are on their way in. I just threw it by you today.
So I, I would, I would ask you, what is a muted color?
But I think, I don't think we need to get into that.
I don't know what that is.
In the future, we should specify.
I think our decisions have to be a bit, I think I've been talking about this a while. They have to be more prescriptive with regard to even the landscape thing, you know, and things like the general muted color thing for bollards is be very specific on it, particularly in the downtown, where it's just going to do whatever they want, particularly with this applicant in their history.
Yeah, I mean, some applicants are just more, have to take advantage when they can, and some are much more work and, and deal with yourself. Some of them are going to, you know-
Well, we're learning. Okay. Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, I think we're, I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Chairman Larue?
Yes?
And Chairman Npamba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond?
Yes.
Member Espaio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Sure, yes.
Member Raymond? Oh, sorry, Member Gaffney? Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Paul, I'm just keeping you on your toes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
You too.
Stay safe.
See you guys, thanks. Ernie, do you want a green room with us?
Green room.